Ladies and gentlemen, I want to call this meeting to order of the public hearing for August 22nd, 2024. Can I get the roll call, please?
Pauline Brown?
Yeah.
Emily Kleiner?
Here.
Mayor Marion?
Here.
Dave Warnock?
Here.
Augie Pearson?
Here.
Let the record show you have a corner.
Thank you. Will you rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You bow your heads with me for a brief prayer. Father God, I come to you tonight on behalf of our town Lord. I ask that you watch over our citizens. I ask that you watch over our elected body. Be with our police department and those troops serving here and overseas. In Jesus' name, amen.
All right, tonight we are having a public hearing. We will not be voting on these matters. This is an opportunity for the general public to comment on any of the ordinances that you see below. They have been posted on our town website and a advertisement has been placed in the local paper. Is that correct, Town Administrator?
Yes, it is.
Okay. If we could go ahead and move forward with Ordinance 2024-01, which is guest and on-street parking requirements.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask one question? Is there anybody on?
Jay is on.
But we have no other citizens on.
No, we don't. We don't do Zoom links for citizens.
It's not a Zoom. It's just a watch.
Oh, okay. No, I didn't know that. But we don't have anybody watching us either.
Other than...
Well, we're live streaming.
Well, yeah, he's live streaming.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, moving forward with Ordinance 2024-01.
All right, so the ordinance that you have before you, we've looked at this a couple different times. To summarize it, we all know about the bad development that has occurred in the town back in the early 2000s. And one of the bad things that came out of that development was the parking problems in safe passage of vehicles in some of these developments. And that has been borne out of a variety of different things. One of them being that although we had standard requirements for how wide a street had to be based upon the volume of traffic, we might be one of the first communities ever in what you're doing here, at least in the area. Not a lot of communities have done it, is to start to think about what kind of parking accommodations have to be provided for on the streets. For example, we have some people here sitting on the board that live in developments where the roads only have to be paved 26 feet wide. Now, the fact that that particular developer only paved it 19 feet wide, that's a different story. But the street paving requirement was 26 feet wide. But if I take you back to about nine months ago, when we started talking about what is the minimum width that a street needs to be, we had said that basically a standard fire truck or trash truck is anywhere from eight to 10 feet wide. And so what we said is that if a developer was going to pave a road that did not allow any parking on either side, they could pave the road 22 feet wide. However, if they were going to provide parking on one side, they would have to increase the width to 28 feet. And if they were going to do it on both sides, they would have to increase the width to 36 feet. Now, that doesn't mean that somebody could build a multi-home subdivision and have no parking out on the street. You're going to see one of the things we've done here is we're cleaning up the language. So when you look at parking on a road, you're looking at two separate things. How much parking they have to provide off the street, which is people's driveways and their garages? How much is required for that? And then our code never talked about how much needed to be out on the street. So at that time, we pretty much let the developer say, I'm going to pave the road 26 feet wide, and I'm going to allow parking on both sides. And then we get what we have now on Saturday and Sunday afternoons in some of our developments of just not being able to get down the road with emergency vehicles, trash trucks, so forth. So what you're going to see what we did in this ordinance is we have revised how much parking is required off-street. We are clearly articulating how big a parking space really needs to be. So what I'm getting at is in the past, we would say you had to have two off-street parking spaces. But we never said how big those parking spaces needed to be. So as you know, some of our developments, the garage is capable of being only 20 feet from the street. So if you park a car in a driveway, you know that that space is no more than 20 feet. What if you have a full-size pickup truck? So what you see happening in our development is people don't want to park with the bumper of the vehicle right up to their house, so they give themselves a foot or two to be able to move in front of the vehicle. Well, then, when you have the right-of-way in some cases or the public property going right out to the edge of the curb, and then you have a sidewalk that might be three feet in on the curb, you now have that 20-foot vehicle that even if it parks nose up to the garage, it's still going to be hanging out on the sidewalk. So when you look at some of our developments, we have people that you can't walk down a sidewalk. And so what we've done is put some thought into this, and we're basically saying, you're seeing in the document, and we've talked about it before, we are saying that a parking space on a residential driveway, to be considered a parking space, has to be 22 feet long by 10 feet wide. And we are stipulating how big the garage has to be. Because as you, we see in some of our developments, the developer might have sold the garage as a single-car garage or a two-car garage, but they're really not big enough for those cars. And they really don't take into account people on where they're going to put their trash cans, so forth and so on. So when you drive down some of our developments on a Saturday afternoon, when people are out and about and they have the garage doors open, you will see that nobody is actually parking in their garage. They're not using the large numbers of people are not using their garage. So when you couple the fact that the driveway is really not big enough for some of the vehicles, they're hanging out on the sidewalk, they were required to have two off-street parking spaces, there wasn't any code requirement of how wide a road had to be to accommodate parking, hence you get the disaster that we have now in some of our developments where the road is not wide enough. People are forced to park out into the street and put even more vehicles out in a bad situation where there's no parking. So that's what this ordinance in general aims to do. So we've gone over a lot of these sections in the past. We already read it into the minutes at the last meeting, and this is a public hearing, just to go over it for some of the folks and answer any questions. We've added definitions in here. And in our world of code enforcement and land development, we have to be very clear in the definition. So when people, for instance, say, hey, I'm designing the driveway for a compact vehicle, well, what's the definition of a compact vehicle? How big is a compact vehicle? So we've added the EPA standards here on what is considered a compact vehicle. We've done that for midsize and full size. Developers' rights and responsibilities, that's language that's in our zoning code that we wanted to carry over here. We put a much more robust definition of what a driveway was, because in some cases, the way the code used to be written, you will see in here that like a driveway, there was language written in it that clearly was meant for a commercial development, but you could make the argument that you could apply it to a residential development. And we'd have some really odd-looking driveways if we were to follow what the code said back at that time. So there's a lot of definitions in here to make clear exactly what we're looking to do. We have a much better definition of off-street parking, what that actually is. So I'll go through the definitions, because they sort of are what they are. And one of the things that we found in our zoning code is that single-family homes were required to have just two off-street parking spaces. But yet townhouses could be required to have up to three parking spaces. And so when you think about the construction of a townhouse in a single-family home, although they are connected with a party wall in between them, they're still basically one to four bedrooms, whatever, and a single-car garage or maybe a two-car garage. But if we're doing off-street parking based upon the number of bedrooms, the single-family home should match what the townhouse should match. And furthermore, we don't think in today's environment, when a lot of these codes were written back in the 70s, whatever, maybe you had the husband and wife sharing a vehicle. If they didn't share a vehicle, they had two separate vehicles, but the kids might not necessarily have vehicles. And as we see in some of a lot of our smaller neighborhoods, the reason why we're having a problem is the mother and father have a vehicle. That's not a problem. I don't want to say it that way. The bad code language is exasperated by mom and dad having a vehicle. Maybe they have a hobby vehicle, too, so that's three. And then the two kids that have reached driving age that are still living at home, they have a vehicle. So now you have five and six vehicles just for that house, and there's no place to put them. So we're not trying to create a code that covers absolutely every variable. We just want to improve the code to do a better job of covering some of those intermittent variables. So that's why you see that we've made off-street parking spaces. If you have one to three bedrooms, it's two parking spaces. And thinking that the thought process behind that is that it's mom and dad in a bedroom, they got two vehicles and two kids, you know, two kids who are probably going to be not of driving age. When people start to have kids of driving age, that's when they start to add another bedroom or they get a bigger house. So in that case, we're jumping up to three vehicles required or three off-street parking spaces with mom and dad having a vehicle, and then potentially a teenage child still living at home being able to have the vehicle. So all the other parking regulations have remained the same. And here's where the nut and bolts of this ordinance lie at. I already said that we have developments that on a Saturday afternoon, you can't get down the street. Well, that gets magnified 100 times over when you have Thanksgiving or Christmas or July 4th or birthday parties where people want to have people over. Now, it would be unrealistic to, let's say you have 100 homes, and try to do a code where all 100 homes are having a Christmas party at the same time. That's unrealistic, because what you end up with is really expansive amounts of pavement, and you've basically become pavement city with nobody really needing all that additional parking, not to mention the environmental impacts. And so we tried to come up with a formula, and you guys saw this before, we had to make some modifications. Well, we're basically saying that in addition to the off-street parking requirements of how many you have to have based upon bedrooms, if you're building a development of 1 to 50 homes, you have to have the ability to park two vehicles out on the street when it's in a development. In other words, the first 50 homes in the development need to have two parking spaces. And then homes 51 through 100, you have to have one parking, additional parking space for those segments, and then three-quarters of a parking space for units 101 to 200, and then half a parking space for 201 and above. The reason why we did it that way is because, again, we're not trying to capture this idea that every home is going to have a birthday party. So when you get a larger development, they begin to spread out, and there is more parking for more vehicles in that situation, because not everybody's going to have a birthday party or a Thanksgiving, whatever. So we clarified that. We even provided sort of an example of how that calculation is supposed to be done, which is basically for the first 50 homes, you have to have two. For 51 to 100, you have to have one for each one of them. And then for 101 to 200, you would have to have .75. Or if you build a, if you had a subdivision with 202 homes, you would need 226 additional parking spaces out in front of the houses. So that means the developer can do a couple different things. They can either pave the road wider and have parking on both sides, or they can create satellite parking. In these bigger developments, you require them to have open space, so they can take that open space and put what you might consider overflow parking. As long as that overflow parking is within 300 feet of the cluster of homes in its servicing. So what that means is when somebody comes over to a party at your house, if there isn't enough parking on the streets, then you would go to a satellite location and have to walk no more than 300 feet to get to the house. So it's sort of a compromise of trying to make this work. So a lot of this goes into those definitions and how this is to be divided up. A large development can be divided up into villages, so to speak. So if you have a large development, you don't want the parking calculation to result in all the off-street parking only being provided up at the far end of the development. So you divide the development up into thirds or halves or quarters, whatever, and you do the calculation within that village. So that way you get more of a one-on-one relationship of what the need is in that particular geographic smaller area, as opposed to it being spread out and really unusable. The other thing that we have put in here is that if a developer provides above and beyond the number of off-street parking requirement, then they could get credit for the amount of on-street parking. So what that really means is if you, if a developer, and this is what I always say, at the end of the day, we know what we need for the community to work. But we're not experts in the field of what we'll sell and what can be marketed. And so we're basically saying to the builder that this is what we need. You pick your poison on how you're going to do it. So what that means is that if you only needed to have three off-street parking spaces, you could build a true two-car garage, a driveway that's going to be as wide as a two-car garage, as long as it allows that 22 feet, now you've provided four off-street parking spaces when all you needed was two off-street parking spaces. So that will eliminate the amount of on-street parking that you need to do. So there's a developer could build a two-car garage. They could set the houses further back from the road. Instead of trying to maximize every square inch of development, you can force them to do a better design by not having the houses so close up to the road. So they basically can pick their poison to meet the end goal that we want. And that's the important thing, is we meeting the end goal. And let me just say why that is important. And I use this analogy all the time. If you think about a big box store like Lowe's and Home Depot, if you're not, if you don't really think analytically about parking requirements, you have what happens when you go to a Lowe's and Home Depot during the Christmas holiday season, where you would think that's the busiest time of the year. But whenever you go there, 40 to 50% of the parking lot is not even filled with cars, because the calculation to determine how much parking is needed is not really in the context of reality. So that's why we don't want to have streets that are way too wide and nobody parks on it, because what happens? People look at that as a dragway, and now they're doing 50 miles through the, 50 miles an hour through the residential development, because the road is too wide. So you sort of get the feel of how we're trying to be pragmatic in solving this. So there are things that did not change in terms of how we're dealing with angled parking. What we did is restructure the way it is worded in here and the way the tables are done to make it a little bit more clear. The other thing that we did in here is we often get people who want to widen their driveway in a residential neighborhood. And that's why you can drive by somebody's house, and you can see parking in front of their front door. But buried in our code is language that says you can't encroach upon your front yard any more than 50%. So when somebody comes in and says, hey, I want to widen my driveway, there's a lot of connecting of dots that need to be done to help them understand why they can't turn their entire front yard into parking. What we basically did is took all those concepts and put it up here into a new paragraph, residential dwelling driveways and parking. And so within that paragraph, it's going to give people the ability to expand their driveway. The other thing that our codes don't allow, and it's not just our codes, any community's codes, is it doesn't look too good when people are parking in their front yard just on the grass. And you go to, you know, if you're on a one-acre, two-acre piece of land and you're off the road, that's a different story. But when you come into some of our smaller densely populated developments, when people have rutted up their front yard and tore it up, believe it or not, that hurts the value of your home. Because remember what we've always said, your poker chip in life to pay for weddings and finances is the equity in your home. And the equity in your home is based upon the market value, but it's also based upon the condition of other houses in the area. So when somebody comes to appraise your house for a home equity loan, and they see your neighbor with ruts all through the front yard, that's going to hurt you. And that's why we get people calling us, saying, I'm so tired of my neighbor tearing up the front yard and dragging mud all over the place. And so we're making it clear that although our code never allowed it, it was really convoluted. But yet, at the same time, we put language in here that will allow that resident to have temporary special event parking. So you have family coming in to visit, and you say, yeah, the grass is dry out, the grass is in good shape, go ahead and park on the front yard. Or you have a July 4th, or, you know, Easter, or Thanksgiving, Christmas, and you have family over, you can pull them in the front yard, but they can only be there for no more than 48 hours, and they can't end up rutting the yard or pulling, you know, mud and stuff out into the yard. So we're trying to give people a compromise without being too restrictive. A lot of the other things you see in here are titles to paragraphs where the language was already written in there, but you don't, you can't find the language in there, because you got to read everything, because there's no titles in it. This code will also provide for people that if they have enough setback off their yard, they could pave next to their garage to park their boat, their all-terrain vehicle, or whatever they want to do. It provides a provision for them to do that. They just have a limitation. In other words, you can't pave up to your neighbor's yard right up to the edge. And when you do that, you have to put some kind of buffer in between, whether it be a fence, planting, vegetation, or whatever. We are also, when I talked about off-street parking in the front yard, we are mandating how that off-street parking in the front yard has to be done on a suitable surface. It can't, you have to pave a certain percentage of your driveway before you get to that stone. It's all about not tracking all that debris out on the road, especially in a residential neighborhood. The other thing that we have done is because of changes in the stormwater management regulations, there really is no benefit to allowing a commercial property, not a residential property, but a commercial property to put their parking lot in in stone. This is not the 1970s anymore. And when you do that, you're still going to be required to provide stormwater management. So we're basically saying we're not going to allow crushed stone in a commercial parking lot anymore. However, if you're a commercial entity and you want to have overflow parking, because every once in a while you have a special event, we will allow you to put temporary overflow or parking provisions for temporary parking. But it has to be put on what is called a grass paver system. And some of the more familiar is like E.P. Henry, where they're basically like flat crisscross patterns that you put on a stable base and allows grass to grow up through it. It doesn't allow the accumulation of mud, and you don't run into a situation where you're tracking stuff out onto the road. And in that scenario, you can avoid stormwater management regulations, because you're allowing the rainwater to seep into where the grass is at. So that pretty much, that's pretty much an overview of the ordinances. Again, we'll have these, if there's any more modifications, we'll have them up on the town's website. So I'd be able to answer any questions.
Would anyone like to comment on Ordinance 2024-01, which is guest and on-street parking requirements? Hearing none. Moving forward into Ordinance 2024-03. Chief, do you have the speed camera safety program? Do you have that?
I have the ordinance.
Okay. Do you want to talk a little bit about it?
Yeah, I can give you some brief bullet points on justification for speed cameras. Prior to the, us looking into them, we would get numerous complaints about speeding along Pearl Street, Mount Street, and many of the other roads around town. So we did a study, and the study is something that's done using what you see the speed monitoring devices on some of the roads around town. It gives us that level of data so that we can see exactly how fast and how often people speed on those roadways. So it gets us to the point where we have justification for the actual device to be installed. First, with speeding typically comes, becomes, with speeding, it typically accidents occur. When you install speed camera devices and have enforcement, it reduces the number of accidents. It gives you consistent and impartial enforcement. You know, people can't say it's the officer or the equipment he's using. It's done electronically, so it's all fair to everyone and anyone. It improves public safety in that neighborhood, in that area. It's cost-effective. It doesn't cost the town anything, because it's paid for and supported based off of the violations. And again, it gives us a lot of data that we can see what the traffic's like in that area. So it's not just a device to raise revenue or things like that. It's actually for the betterment of the community. It's for the safety of the community. And the data is what pretty much drives where the devices go.
Town Administrator, would you like to comment on this, or is...
No, that's, this is, the chief is much more well-versed on this than I am.
Would anyone else like to speak about Ordinance 2024-03, which is the speed camera safety program?
I just want, let me, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. King.
There's many benign devices such as speed buses, speedboats. I know a lot of people don't hear about them, but they have often kind of using, volatile kind of using them in certain neighborhoods. They have very gradually sloped ones, which are not to slow the car down and have to impede emergency vehicles. And I would say a benign approach in addition to consequential type of torsion also, because there are some people who just, they just don't care. there are some people who just, they just don't care. And as I said, I'm only experienced mostly on our street, they can run and it's, it's pretty bad sometimes. Over the last 20 years, I've had three cats got ran over and nobody stopped. So you got a lot of joggers up and down the street. I don't know what to say. I'm impressed here, we're going to do some sort of enforcement. Would you come up with? There has to be some sort of contingency, either through shack absorbers or through a practical.
Thank you for coming out and commenting on it. Commissioner Pearson.
The only thing I, I want people to understand that this, and just to reinforce what the chief is saying, this isn't a money-making affair for us. The money's going to be focused back into public safety so that we, we can develop other programs that can help with speed enforcement, other enforcements that the chief can come up with. This will give us additional funding for those. It does not have to come out of the town's budget. So that helps the town in itself that it will become self-sufficient. If you follow social media, we get blasted all the time on it. And the chief and I've had numerous discussions about this. That's why you'll see the speed monitor trailer placed places where we get a majority, a lot of complaints. So this is, this is something that the, I'm not going to say the residents, but drivers have created just from the data that was collected from the, the speed monitoring signs. I can tell you on Pearl Street, it was unbelievable what we were seeing. So there is no reason that we, we shouldn't be doing this. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Pearson. Would anyone else like to comment about ordinance 2024-03, which is the school zone speed safety camera program? Hearing none. Once again, this ordinance will sit and be considered by the board at the next town meeting. Moving forward into ordinance 2024-05, which is the subdivision and land development code. Town administrator.
Yes, so this one, the same as the other one, a lot of definitions to just make clear how to, how it applies, what we're trying to do. And the general gist of what we are trying to do, this is, this is designed for new development that comes into the community. And right now, we by state law are required to make sure that developers comply with stormwater management. Now, in the past, that used to be done by having someone else do it for us, but as you know, recently we decided to take over that enforcement. The point I'm making is that some things are state and federal government requirement. And in this particular case, so is what I've always talked about is MS4, which is basically an EPA and Clean Water Act requirement where we have to make sure that nutrients are not getting into the Chesapeake Bay in the, in the, in the waterways of Maryland. And we, every, a lot of communities have to do their part. So one of the things you've heard me talk about in the past, the town is facing a $1.7 million unfunded mandate expenditure that we have to spend by December of 2025 to comply with our portion of that law. But what we're saying here is that when somebody comes in to do a development, they should have to assist with that because they are touching the land that they are developing and it has to be brought up to code at that point. So basically what this is saying, and I'm going to scroll down towards the bottom, you've seen the definitions before. The meat and potatoes of this is that's... What we're basically saying here in this page and a half here is that whatever a developer is going to be developing and they are developing more than 5,000 square feet, and 5,000 square feet is the same triggering mechanism for stormwater management. Basically what we're saying is that if they are going to develop and they're going to trigger more than 5,000 square feet, they have to do a, a site assessment to see, to basically evaluate the existing conditions of the environmental resources on site. This assessment shall encompass both a desktop and field analysis and must be submitted for approval by the town engineer. So the same way they would have to do stormwater management regulations and figure out how they're going to deal with stormwater management, they would, they would design some ponds and retention and detention basins and they would give it to our engineer and our engineer would check it and get to recognized standards to say yes or no, you've met the, you've met the intent. We're going to do that on the MS4 and restor, environmental restoration requirements. So we're basically saying that they have to do that. But in addition to that, we're also saying that not all developments will be required to do anything because one of the biggest things that triggers this is if you have a stream running through the property or if you have wetlands on the property. And so we're basically acknowledging that some developments might not have anything to do. However, there are credits, and that's the way the state looks at it, there are credits for doing things like planting trees. And the benefit of trees is trees can help with soil erosion and soil erosion going into the streams and into the waterways is what causes, is part of the problem. It also is good for, you know, environmental things like, you know, producing and improving air quality. But more importantly, we know that we are a rural community and we all value the fact that it's a rural wide-open community. But property owners have rights to develop their land. We can't stop them from doing that. And so if somebody were to come along and develop something that we have always enjoyed as being, you know, open farmland, instead of it being 50 houses and no trees or 100 houses and no trees, we are saying at the very minimum, you are going to have to plant trees in this situation. That's going to do a couple of things. It's going to help the town with its compliance with the MS4 because we can't get credit for tree planting. It's going to improve the environment, but it's also going to soften the blow of that land development of somebody turning 100 acres of farmland or whatever, 50 acres of farmland into residential or commercial development. At least we can soften that by having a lot of trees strategically planted to try to offset that. And we're basically also putting in here that when those trees are planted or anything that has to be done that according to the MS4 requirements in a residential neighborhood, a development, the homeowners association will be charged with maintaining that, fixing it and protecting it, which is no different than the stormwater management regulations now. It's no different than the open space requirements. When they have open space, they have to maintain it. So we're just saying it's another thing that they have to maintain to make sure that the community continues to meet its intent of assimilating into our town as best as possible. Meaning instead of having massive concreted buildings on an open farmland, now we have a lot more softer development, environmental features, and they can't just die after five years and nobody does anything about it. The homeowners association will be responsible for that. And if it is a commercial development, the owner of the commercial property, the same as what they do now for stormwater, will have to take, will have to fix that. So this language is basically how it's structured to achieve that end goal.
Thank you, town administrator. Do we have any citizens comment on ordinance 2024-05? Once again, this will sit and we will consider it at our next town meeting. Moving forward into commissioner comments. Commissioner Braun.
I have no comments.
Commissioner Kleiner.
Just to report that the ordinance number 2024-05 has been reviewed by the planning commission. We looked it over this week and provided a comment. So everything's available for you to review.
Thank you. Commissioner Pearson.
No comments.
Commissioner Warnock.
No comments.
Town attorney, do you have any comments?
No, no comments either.
All right. Once again, we thank the general public for attending our public hearing this evening. All of these ordinance will sit and be posted and are posted, excuse me, are posted on our town website if you would like to review them. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.